Good evening, everybody. Please call the board and we'll start with the real call and see you.
Thank you Mayor Levy.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Case.
Here.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember LaBar.
Here.
Councilmember Sonnier. And I know Councilmember Schaefer's coming but will be late. Sawyer, excuse me.
We have another card draw, huh?
He's just gonna be late.
We've got to stop the game hopefully or come in with good news of the way up. If everybody would please, let us know you can play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we start this evening on the agenda, I want to introduce our new city manager Darren Tangeman, who we are thrilled to have. Came through about 100 applications and was our shining star. And we're pleased to have him. I think everybody here will be thrilled to have the opportunity to talk with him and work with him as he helps lead us through hopefully a number of years as we move forward. So Darren, welcome. We'll be happy to have you. Before you say anything, we're gonna have Suzanne give you the oath of office.
Could you join me into the podium?
This is your last chance to get out.
I will have you raise your right hand and if you can repeat after me, aye and state your name.
Aye Darren Tangeman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the State of Colorado.
And the State of Colorado.
The Charter and ordinances.
The Charter and ordinances.
Of the City of Woodland Park.
The City of Woodland Park.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of city manager.
Duties of city manager.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
About, which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
All right. Woo! You're speaking fishy.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right. Well, it's great to be here after about two months of trying to get up here. It's been really tough over the last two months trying to transition from Pueblo West to Woodland Park and driving about two hours a day, but my family's here and we're really excited to be in the community and get started. So thanks to the city council for selecting me as your next city manager and I look forward to working with everyone in the community in the future.
Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number three. Confirmation declaring September 29th through the seventh. It's Creek Week and I think Lisa Helkum is here. She is. Lisa, when you cover your microphone, give us your name and your home address for the week beginning.
I'm Lisa Helkum and I live at 190 Highview Circle in Woodland Park. Very happy to be here, recently moved.
Yay!
Yeah, thank you.
How did you love Woodland Park?
All the way. Well, good evening council members and members of this great community. My name is Lisa Helkum and I am a recent resident of Woodland Park. I'm also an employee of Colorado Springs Utilities and a committee member of the Fountain Creek Week. And I would like to thank you all for acknowledging Fountain Creek Week. It is a collaborative effort with Colorado Springs Utilities, city government, and many environmental groups in the area. The goal of Creek Week is to bring the communities together to clean up our waterways for the citizens and the wildlife. This project started, it was about five years ago, and it has grown every single year. And last year there were 2,500 volunteers to clean up areas throughout not only Colorado Springs but Manitou and Pueblo and Woodland Park. And for the Woodland Park area, my goal for my event that I'm doing, I'm coordinating the creek and the trail from the back of Walmart to Safeway. And my event is October 6th and it starts at 8 o'clock. And if you'd like to sign up or get more information, it can be found at fountaincreekweek.com. And I would also like to say personally, I'd like to thank City Market for donating a gift card so that we can get snacks and other needed items. Walmart is allowing us to use their trash compactor and it really showed me what this community is all about. When I asked for these items and I just got this enthusiasm and it was just really great to see that in the community. They haven't seen that in Colorado Springs every time that they've asked organizations, but right away I got it from the Woodland Park organizations and it just felt great to now be living here. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Council, any questions? Lisa, good luck with what you're doing and we really appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Mayor Levy, will you read the proclamation into the record? It's right on the diaphragm.
I'd be glad to. Confirmation recognizing Creek Week 2018. Whereas the City of Woodland Park is fortunate to have extensive and diverse natural resources such as forests, grasslands, riparian areas, lakes, creeks, and a wide variety of open spaces. And whereas the Fountain Creek watershed, including Fountain Creek, related wetlands, existing trails, and recreational facilities, is a unique watershed that is an important resource and asset to the residents and visitors of Fountain and the Pike's Peak region. And whereas the Fountain Creek watershed flood control in Greenway District is partnering with the City of Colorado Springs, Colorado Springs Utilities, El Paso County, Pueblo County, the cities of Manitou Springs, Fountain, Towns of Monument, and Green Mountain Falls, along with numerous community organizations to coordinate the fifth annual Creek Week cleanup, which will encourage the protection, restoration, and maintenance of the Fountain Creek watershed. And whereas this nine-day litter cleanup effort kicks off in Fountain Creek Regional Park on September 29th and runs through October 7th, 2018 throughout the watershed. And whereas Creek Week, programs and activities are designed to raise awareness about the littering issue within our watershed to encourage organizations and individuals to collect litter and debris to make Fountain Creek and the watershed cleaner and safer. And whereas businesses, churches, schools, nonprofits, neighborhood associations, youth groups, service clubs, and individuals are encouraged to form a Creek Crew to clean up at a Creek Week project site. And whereas Creek Week litter removal activities will reduce pollution in our creeks and clogs in our waterways that can lead to flooding, provide for a safer drinking water supply, and enhance wildlife habitat and property values. Now therefore, the council members of the City of Woodland Park, Colorado hereby proclaim September 29th through October 7th, 2018 as Creek Week in Woodland Park and encourage our citizens to help protect, restore, and maintain our waterways by participating in Creek Week activities done this 20th day of September, 2018 in Woodland Park, Colorado. Thank you. And Lisa, thanks again. Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to agenda item number four and for all those with an agenda in front of them, item 10C has been removed from your agenda tonight. Move on to consent calendar. Suzanne?
Thank you Mayor Levy. This evening we have two items on the consent calendar. The first being the minutes of the September 4th council meeting and the second being the statement of expenditures for August of 2018.
Council, questions, concerns? Not a call for motion to approve the consent calendar.
I will move to approve because the consent calendar is presented.
Thank you.
Second.
One second, thank you Carol. Suzanne?
Thank you. Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
LaBar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six zero.
Okay, agenda item number six, I don't have the sign up sheet yet.
I'm gonna go get that.
Making public items not on the agenda. I'll wait for Suzanne. If you signed up and would like to speak, would you just raise your hand so I can look at you? Will Brown, you get to be first. You know the procedure. You will state your name and your address for the record.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, we had a recent policy change on stating address as if you're uncomfortable stating your address, you can just say which town you live in.
Great.
Thank you.
Is that enough? I don't care. I don't care.
Go ahead Will.
William F. Brown. I currently reside in Gilbert, Arizona.
Well, thank you for being here. Go right ahead, sir.
First off, I'd like to say that I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, you didn't get back to me this week on Tuesday or Wednesday or Thursday or today, like you said you would.
I appreciate that. I'm sorry to get back to you. I haven't had the opportunity yet.
The agenda I'd like to talk to is I'd like at some point to meet with several of the council members because I have a major issue with a city employee named Sally Riley.
I'm gonna stop you right now. That's not the road we're gonna go down. If you wanna meet with any of the council people, you're more than welcome to on a one or two at a time basis. You have all their contact information. If you don't, then you can get it. We're not here to chastise any city employee today, I'm not gonna have it.
I expected that, Mr. Mayor. You've been covering for her the whole time. This is absolutely absurd. I've been a member of this community for 45 years. I have never been treated like I've been treated the last three weeks by this person in the city and by you, Mr. Mayor, you know? And it's been absolutely absurd. And so I would like some redress before we go to some litigation.
And you have every right in the world to talk to the councilmen. You can talk to our city manager at your convenience and they'll be glad to speak with you.
Just like you did, huh?
Just like I did.
Yeah. Yeah, you broke your promise.
Mr. Brown, if we had a chance to meet today, I'm glad I got a chance to meet with you. And as I told you, I will keep my promise. I'm looking into the details of your concerns and we'll address them.
If it's all right with the city council, I will get your names and addresses and I'll contact you. And I hope that you would give this 45-year resident and builder and developer in this community the freedom to come and talk to you because my allegations are serious. And rather than get at this point the legal environment, I would like to have the opportunity to talk to you.
Mr. Brown, we have a city clerk who can supply any of that information that is on the website and she'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Phil Layton, 1420 Evergreen Heights. I'm here to talk about the Cruise Above the Clouds that we had about quite two weeks ago, give you up to date. We're leaving for Connecticut tomorrow, so this is the opportunity I have to give everybody some numbers from this year's event. I'm gonna try to do this in five minutes or less, we'll see. This was the 27th Annual Cruise Above the Clouds. This year we had 12 major sponsors, 322 registered participants. We presented 50 trophies, one of which council member Barr received for the best Volkswagen on the show.
Yeah, all right.
That was special. Our nonprofits this year, we had 15 nonprofits that we awarded grants to. And if you were at the park, you saw us give checks for over $20,000 from this year's event. Those 15 nonprofits represented nonprofits in the community, in the arts, in the education, service organizations, and others, shared in that $20,000. That number's gonna go up a little bit when we have the final numbers in from the car show, which should be within the next month. This year's car show brings the total, for somebody new on council, of the 27-year history of the event, we've given back over $350,000 to the nonprofits in Teller County. And that's real special for us. I wanted to recognize some of the organizations that got our grants this year. Daybreak, Help the Needie, Teller Senior Coalition, the Woodland Park Senior Center, Habitat for Humanity, and Colorado Lions Clamp Camp. Those represented our community. Nonprofits in the arts, we gave money to the Symphony Above the Clouds, the Butte Theater in Cripple Creek. In education, we gave a major amount of money to the Cripple Creek and Victor High School. The animal institutions, we gave money to ARF, to T-Crafts. For service organizations that received grants included Kiwanis Rotary, American Legion. We were a little disappointed this year, some of the organizations that you guys fund through the community investment grant process as well as other grants, who last year received a total of over $10,000, didn't apply for grants this year. And it was a little discerning to me because some of those are in the city limits of Woodland Park. And I'm not throwing anybody under the bus, but I think you need to know that some of the people that really rely on money from the community didn't even apply for grants with Cruise Above the Clouds. And again, combined, that total we gave them last year was close to $10,000. Aspen Mine in Cripple Creek didn't apply, Community Cupboard in Woodland Park didn't apply, Community Partnership and Divide didn't apply, Focus on the Forest didn't apply, Little Chapel Food Pantry and Divide did not apply, and Teller County Search and Rescue did not apply. Last year those people got over $10,000. In closing, as been the tradition for the show, I'd like to present the mayor with our framed poster from this year to thank the city for their support of Cruise Above the Clouds. And Neil, to give that award to Jerry Mays for best car, mayor's pick. Jerry and the mayor go way back, but thanks for everything you guys do. And staff, I want to thank you all for everything that you do for the Cruise Above the Clouds.
Stick right here for a second, Phil. Four or five years ago, Phil told me that I could name anybody as the mayor's choice. So I waited about five years for my good friend and his 1932 Ford, which is, is that Ford Chevy? 32 Chevy, which is a pretty cool car. But more importantly, what you guys do for this community is amazing and it's unmatched. It really is unmatched. There's nobody else that does what you do. We gave you guys $1,000 seed money this year and you returned $20,000. And so I think everybody is well aware of the great event. I don't think everyone's aware of everything that you do and give back to the community. So I think everybody wants to give you a big round of applause. Great.
Okay, Al, I'm gonna keep you till your number 8A comes up, if that's okay. That's when you wanna chat, I think. Okay, I have no one else signed up. Is there anybody here that would like to speak? Okay, then we will move on to unfinished business, which we have none. And so we'll go to ordinances on initial posting and keep quiet.
Okay, ordinance 1335 is a vacation of a utility easement on lot one of the reserve at Bridlewood. That was requested by Al, Roberta Born. This was originally plotted to accommodate a sewer line. And I just have a quick map so you guys can see where this is at. City Hall in the center, obviously, and then the star on the top side of the screen, Bridlewood and Woodland Park. Here's a zoom in of the subdivision. The red lines indicate city limits, so this area here is outside city limits. Lot one is right here. And then further on the agenda, on agenda items 10A and 10B, we'll be discussing lots, all these lots all over again, but this in front of you for ordinance 1335 is simply a vacation of a 20-foot utility easement. We recommend approval of ordinance 1335 on initial posting and set the public hearing for October 4th, 2018.
Thanks, Q. Straightforward, council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I saw that we've kinda got two things on here, 8A and 10B, I believe.
Correct.
Give me the, so one's an initial posting and the other's a resolution. Give me the sort of...
So to vacate an easement, council has to do an ordinance. And then what happened with these lots are is they still installed a sewer main, but in a different location. So then we're gonna establish an easement for that sewer main that was constructed. That sewer main has met all city specs. We have ASBILs for that and is put into service already. So we're going through the formality of getting the easement so we can maintain it.
I beg your pardon, I apologize for interrupting. So because this initial posting, are we, it seems we're on out of sequence. Explain to me where I'm wrong.
Ordinances come first on the agenda where the resolutions come under new business. So the easement that we're vacating is just a simple vacation of an easement. And then the resolutions later on are simply re-establishing an easement where the sewer main lies.
Yeah, no, I understand that. It seems since we're on initial posting, by some miracle, we say no on final. Wouldn't that be the time we do the easement?
If you said no on final, you could say no on the public hearing, but we would still establish the new easements for the new sewer main. And then the property owner would probably ask you why you're voting no to vacate an easement that's no longer needed.
Yeah, I, okay.
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding you.
Well, so we're gonna do an easement resolution. Let's say both these things pass tonight, one's initial posting, but then we have to redo another public hearing later on the first part again. Isn't the resolution part really gonna happen after both of those things happen anyway?
It appears, I mean, excuse me, but I don't think either one of them are related. The new easement's sort of facilitate a new construction item and to accept those easements and place them for new lines that have been in place. Those kind of stand alone. And to establish those easements so that they can be recorded and become part of the property record. We're vacating, and this is just a first reading on an ordinance, requires two hearings. This is a vacation of a line that is not used and won't be used and there's no intention of using it. And it requires two hearings, so we're doing the initial posting now and then we'll act on it at the next public, at the next meeting for public hearing. I don't see that they're related at all.
I do have another slide to maybe help clarify.
Just...
They're not related, you're correct. So this is a vacation and then the other agenda items are accepting a different portion of land for that easement. So this slide here points to the vacation of the easement that traverses the property on what you see right here, this section, is the vacation of the easement. And then later on the agenda, right here, you would be accepting an easement for this area where the sewer main was installed.
Okay, that helps. Thank you.
Sorry, buddy.
Any other questions, council? Motion to approve 1335 on initial posting, please.
So moving. As presented.
And the second, thank you Suzanne.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
LaBar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six zero.
Okay, we're gonna move on to public hearings. And ordinance 1334 and the real call.
Thank you Mayor Levy, members of council. I'm gonna begin my part of the presentation by introducing the applicant, Mr. Eric Smith, who is also the property owner. He will do his presentation on the application and then I'll do my presentation of the analysis.
Thank you Laura. Eric Smith, 2435 Research Parkway, Colorado Springs, Colorado. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Tangeman, hopefully I said that right. You know, when you have a name like Smith, you're not very good at pronouncing other people's names. I just tell people that. But anyway, welcome. I served a number of years on council, so I hope you enjoy the community. I know you will. So tonight, as Laura said, and unfortunately Ron Whitener, who is the principal for the Aspen, could not be here this evening, but I wear a couple different hats. I'm the property owner for lots three through six that we'll be discussing as well as my engineering firm, Matrix Design Group. We did the work in the entitlement site plan package, so I wear a couple different hats this evening. So the Aspen is located just to the east of Walmart. This is Highway 24. North is up, here's Safeway, Walmart, and the Aspen. The Aspen is a current building that sits there today. This is for the second building site. The first building consisted of 25 beds. The second building is 25 beds as well. This project was originally approved with two buildings. The second building was located on lots three and four, and I've got a site plan next. We're just proposing to move the building to lots five and six. Lots three and four will become open space that'll be utilized by the residents. So instead of having building on the entire three acres that make up lots one through six, we'll actually have building on four of the lots and two of the lots will remain open space for the most part. Some of the issues that kinda came up last time in 2015 when we were approved had to do with biohazard waste and that will of course be disposed of and taken care of per state regulations. Meal preparation, Ron set a planning commission that they actually have now put in commercial kitchens. And that's a new requirement, I guess, by state regulation for assisted living facilities. And so they have put a commercial kitchen in the current building and they'll add another kitchen in the other building. The main purpose obviously is just preparing food for the residents, of course, but no fried foods. And as far as smells and those types of things, that was an issue that came up before. They have commercial hoods in place and with no frying, they don't expect to have any odor whatsoever. I talked about the phasing of the project. Phase one, building one is open. I don't know how many residents. I know they had to have two residents for a period of time to be able to get their state license. I think that time may have come and passed and I believe that they have had quite a bit of inquiries. So now that they're up and running, hopefully they'll be placing residents soon. From an economic perspective, the total project when completed will generate about 25 new full-time jobs between both buildings. So that's a pretty significant impact, I believe, to the city. So that's a pretty significant impact, I believe, to the city. Obviously, increased tax revenues, development fees, those types of things. So as I mentioned on the site plan, the original building, or the second building, was proposed up in this area here, which is lots 3 and 4. This is the existing building that's there today. Lots 5 and 6 are located in this area. So it's shifting the building from what was here and what's currently approved in the current conditional use permit over to here. So when you drive in, you'll see the back of both buildings with retaining walls, so it'll look very similar to what's out there today. And both buildings have a great view of Pike's Peak. The way that this grading works is we have a fairly good cut, so all the residential houses that are up to the north actually look right over the top of the building. So they'll have to look down, actually, to see the roof. So there'll be no obstructed views whatsoever of Pike's Peak from any of those residents. And this building actually sits high enough that it actually will have views over the existing building along Highway 24, BSI. So they'll have views of Pike's Peak pretty much unobstructed as well. The total gross acreage of lots 3 through 4 is 2.4 acres. Almost 68% of the site will be open space. So that's a pretty high number. There will be no building that will ever occur in lots 3 and 4, and we'll actually be vacating lot lines to make sure that that doesn't occur. So when this is all said and done, the existing building will... The lot for the existing building will consist of this area. The lot for this building will consist of this area. So it'll be two lots. Each lot will have one building on it. A total of 21 new parking spaces will be added. Nine are required. So from a landscaping perspective, if you've been out and taken a look at the site, it's very well landscaped, the existing building. That landscaping will carry over to the second building, as well as the open space amenity area with sidewalks, perhaps a little garden area, community garden area, you know, some patios and such. There's a fire pit that currently sits on this side of the building here, the existing building. Another fire pit is planned kinda in between both buildings. So from an architecture standpoint, it'll match the existing building that's out there today. 25 feet in height, give or take. Natural stone, stucco, like I said, just basically a match of the building that's there today. And the idea of these are to, you know, create more of a home look, home environment. So that's, you know, it's a 12,000-square-foot home, basically. 19 rooms, total of 25 beds. So just a couple things to point out. Assisted living generates very little traffic. Originally, the traffic study that was done for this total five-acre development called the Village anticipated commercial. And so for these lots, at one point in time, we could've had up to almost 800 trips a day. The new land use with the both buildings, 134 trips, so fairly dramatic reduction. 13, 14 trips during the peak hour, it's usually about 10% of the total trips. So we're talking about a lot of... A lot less traffic than what could've occurred on the property.
Oh, and Eric, you're saying with other permitted uses, it would've been 797?
That... Yes. Yes, correct. The roadway improvements along Highway 24 have been long completed, so there's right-turn lanes on the highway, acceleration lanes. Obviously, there's no straight shot through the median, there never will be. But all of the improvements along the state highway have been made, and CDOT has reviewed the plan, and they don't have any comments. From a drainage perspective, we're working with the city to finalize our drainage report. So we had a meeting this morning, and we'll be finalizing that drainage report and getting it back to the city within the next few days. And we expect that to go forward based on our conversation this morning. And then I mentioned the view sheds previously. From a lighting perspective, full cutoff lighting. Of course, we meet all the setbacks. Emergency vehicles was a concern the last time, and there'll be protocols to make sure that sirens aren't blazing at 2:00 in the morning, you know, in case they have to take somebody to the hospital. So they'll turn off their sirens when they get into the residential neighborhood, as they do today. And from a property valuation standpoint, you know, we've had great appreciation in property values, and there hasn't been any impact to surrounding properties in the area with the first building. So in summary, as the staff has noted in the staff report, we agree that we've met the 11 conditions for a conditional use permit. We have no issues with any of the conditions of approval, and that we ask for your approval on the CUP and the site plan. And with that, if I can get this to work. There we go. Happy to answer. Any questions?
One question. Would the use of this facility ever be for memory loss or...
Memory care.
Memory care. I'm sorry, yes?
Yeah, no.
No? And the reason I would ask that is, is there going to be fencing around the open space area?
No.
Eric, is the Village open?
Uh, yes.
The Aspen?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes. Yes. It's open, and Ron at the Planning Commission extended anyone that wanted a tour to stop by, and he'd be happy to give you a tour, show it off. It's very nice. Very well done.
It looks nice.
Looks great.
Great finishes inside.
It lives in the neighborhood. What do you think?
It's directly across the street from my house. And so far, we don't have any complaints. I think the only complaint that I have heard is lighting, and that's from the neighbors who live up above and are able to see that. But those of us that are on your level with it, it hasn't affected us. Traffic hasn't affected us, no noise. That I'm aware of, no one, none of my neighbors have contacted me to raise any concerns. So...
Great.
So so far, you guys have done a nice job.
Thank you.
Eric, tell me again why you moved from lots 3 and 4 to lots 6?
So the developer, as they looked at the location, lots 3 and 4, we had a very large retaining wall. If you were out there and you saw the cut before they filled it in, it was 20, 25 feet tall. And that's where a retaining wall would've been. The building backed right up to that retaining wall, basically. So not great views, not pretty, you know, northeast facing, so pretty cold place during the winter. And they wanted to have that view out the back to Pike's Peak, like they do on the current, on the existing building. And they also felt that... Because originally, they were just gonna develop the four lots, and then I, as the owner of the other two lots, would've had those... I would've kept those two lots and tried to figure out what to do on them while they wanted to move it, move the building over, get the views to Pike's Peak, but also create that amenitized area between the two buildings, so that they'd have one nice development. And I thought that made a lot of sense.
You wouldn't have the open space there?
Correct.
Well, Mayor Levy, it's hard to follow that slideshow presentation, but here we go with my slideshow presentation. So this is the city council review of the Woodland Park assisted living facility. It's a conditional use permit for a nursing home use, and it's a site plan review for the development of lots 5 and 6. As you recall, phase 1 involved a community meeting way back in September 2015, where members of the community did come out and speak about the first project as it was proposed. City Council did finally approve the first project on November 5th, 2015. And now the applicant has submitted what we're calling Phase 2. It went before the Planning Commission for a public hearing on August 23rd, and is now before council for second reading and public hearing, and it is September 20th, 2018, today. This is a layout of the city showing the location of the proposed site. As you can see, it's at the south end of Highway 24, on the east end of Highway 24 as you're coming into the city from Colorado Springs. This is an aerial photo showing the lots in question here. So at one time, this Eric Smith did own lots 1 through 6 as it goes around this cul-de-sac. He then sold lots 1 and 2 to the Aspen, and the first building of this development was built. And I do have photos. Lots 3 and 4 was where the second building was going to go, and now is going to be that open space. And then lots 5 and 6 is where the second building is proposed to be moved. This aerial photo also shows the general location and some of the surrounding uses. You can see immediately to the south is a commercial building. Used to be the Paradox, is now BSI Brewing, and they grow yeast there, so... Surrounding it, again, this has been developed as the first phase, the Aspen. This is also a commercial property to the south here that's currently vacant. You'll see surrounding single-family residences all around to the east as you go up. This is the Pike National Forest here. And there's the highway going westbound, eastbound. And on this side, you can see the Walmart roof and their detention ponds and the City of Woodland Park lift station. And then we get into Teller County here with Fountain Creek and private properties. This is a zoning map showing the site, and the NC, which is Neighborhood Commercial, is the zone for these six lots, plus BSI, plus a lot of the properties that abut the highway immediately to the south. In yellow is the suburban residential zone, which is all of the residential tracts of land, lots that you see around there. And of course, the PUD here is the Walmart PUD. This is Teller County here, and this is the boundary, the southwestern boundary of the City of Woodland Park, right there. So this, these are photos of the existing site. This is the Aspen looking from the road up to the first building that was built. Again, this is looking from the road down over lots 3 and 4 here that are vacant currently and will be part of the amenitized area. And this is looking towards lots 5 and 6, where the new building will go. This is the first phase, the first original proposal that was approved by council. This is the Aspen that is currently built right now on lots 1 and 2. This is where the second building, which is an identical footprint to the first building, this is where it was proposed. And then lots 5 and 6 were not even part of this original conditional use permit or site plan. And again, you can see here Glendale Drive abutting on this side, Highway 24 on the west, and residences around here and to the east. This is what the applicant is proposing with the layout. Again, the Aspen currently exists. He is proposing to vacate this lot line so that this will be all one lot. And he is proposing to vacate these two lot lines between lots 4, 5, and 6, so that the second building can be placed here, along with parking and some landscaping here. Both of these buildings will share this amenitized area, and the Aspen, the owners of the Aspen are looking to purchase and build the second building as well. So it will be one complex on two lots. This is what the elevation is for the proposed second buildings. Very similar, identical to the elevation that was submitted with the first building. And this is what it will look like minus the garage. There's not enough space for the garage, so that's why it's X-ed out. But you're seeing a lot of the same architectural standards and submittals, and it'll look almost, if not identical, very similar to the Aspen that you see right now. So staff did a complete review and analysis of this application. We sent out referrals to the various departments within the city, including the utilities department, the public works department, the police department, at the time, the economic development department, and the building department. We also sent out referrals to external agencies, such as the Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District, IRE, Black Hills, Baha Cable, CDOT, and Century Link. And all notices that we received were incorporated into the staff report that was with your packet. We also sent out adjacent property owner notices to everyone within 150 feet of the site. And we put a poster on the site, and tonight's hearing was published in the Pike's Peak Courier. We, staff did not receive any comments from the public. And just to reiterate, the zone that we are in is the Neighborhood Commercial Zone District. And the intended use for the Neighborhood Commercial Zone District is for general retail, personal service, office establishments, and other commercial uses to serve specific geographic locations. And considerations include things like efficient and safe transportation and pedestrian access to this commercial district, elimination or reduction of commercial strip development, and those types of issues. So these are some of the examples of things that are permitted uses that are allowed in NC. And again, this was included in your staff report. I just wanted to highlight that a conditional use is the nursing home, which is why we are here before council tonight to get approval for this conditional use, for the nursing home for lots 5 and 6. In the Neighborhood Commercial Zone District, we do have standards that this current application does comply with. For instance, it complies with the maximum 35-foot height limitation. It complies with the 25-foot front and rear setback, the 8-foot side setbacks, and/or 15-foot next to the suburban residential zone. It complies with the 40-foot frontage requirement. It complies with the parking requirements, the fencing and shrub requirements, such as he submitted. The signs will be under a separate permit for review. It complies with the sidewalk requirements and the landscaping requirements, as specified in our municipal code. As the applicant stated, he presented 11, he needed to comply with 11 standards, the conditional use standards. Staff believes he complies with all 11 standards, including the need for this facility in this location, adjacent to the first building that was built, that there is no harm or injury to the public health and welfare in the area should this be developed as proposed, that it will not be injurious to any property values. It harmonizes with city plans and city regulations and complies with city plans and regulations, that there is no additional impact to traffic, that the drainage is being worked on with staff, in cooperation with staff, that there is adequate available water, sewer, and wastewater facilities, that no hazards will be proposed with this development, and that it meets all of our architectural and design standards. And we believe it is a high-quality building that is much needed here in the City of Woodland Park. The site plan review standards are very similar to the conditional use permit standards. Again, it, staff believes it complies, complies with our comprehensive plan, with city regulations, including grading, erosion, design, parking, trees, lighting, layout, and architectural standards. Again, complies with our traffic requirements. It complies with all of our requirements for erosion control, for drainage, water, sewer, wastewater, air quality, fire, safety, hazard mitigation. And staff does believe it is compatible with the neighborhood and with the community and with the Commercial Zone District and Residential Zone District abiding it. Finally, the recommendation is, it has gone through the Planning Commission review, and the Planning Commission does recommend approval of this conditional use permit and site plan review. Staff also recommends approval of ordinance number 1334, series 2018, granting a conditional use permit for a nursing home, and the site plan for the development of lots 3 through 6 as condition. And I'm just gonna go for the record through the five conditions, if that's all right. So condition number one, signage is to be approved under a separate sign permit. Condition number two, the applicant shall submit four sets of the signed final site plan. That includes all revision dates. And that the site plan shall not be executed by the city until the drainage report has been approved by the Public Works Department. Number three, amend the elevations so that it crosses out all sections of the building that are not going to be proposed with building 2. Number four, the zoning development permit is for the construction, for construction, and grading permit for site improvements shall include the following. We need a final stamped utility and grading plan, drainage report, landscaping plan, and architectural elevations. Number five, prior to issuance of a zoning development permit, the applicant shall vacate the interior lot lines as he's proposing, shall establish public utility easements pursuant to IRE, and shall pay all impact fees as applicable. That concludes my presentation. Mayor Levy, are there any questions of staff?
Any question? Counsel? What do you think?
Well, what I asked the applicant to come up and explain his drainage report, but there is a drainage report that has to be submitted, and there is detention that has to occur.
That's a good question. So there's already an existing underground detention facility that was constructed in 2005 to serve the five-acre site. There are new drainage criteria that are in place today that were not in place in 2005. So there's some additional detention requirement that will have to occur on site that'll either be underground or in some sort of a pond.
And if underground, who will be the underground keeper?
It'll be the property owner.
Do they have to have a report on the maintenance, detention on if it goes underground?
Yes, sir. They do have to submit a maintenance plan with their final drainage report before we will sign off.
Counsel, anybody else? Any other public comment? Anybody in the audience like to say a word or two?
Well, I'll just say this, they're a great, great addition to our community. Clearly, we're all getting older. These kinds of things, especially in Woodland Park with what we know about demographics moving forward, just a great amenity to our community. So congratulate you for, I know it's a great business, and you're thinking along those lines, but also a great amenity to the community. So thank you very much for the light there.
Well, thank you, Mayor Levy. And I assume you guys will vote here in a second. But I do want to take one second to thank staff. I've worked with the staff on many projects. And while sometimes we have our debates, if you will, we always resolve them amicably and really create great projects. So we have a great staff here. I love working with these guys. Laura does a much better job of presenting than I do. She's very thorough. But anyway, I just wanted to say that, so thank you.
Thank you. Love the advocacy. That's what we want to be all about. Okay, counsel, a motion to approve ordinance number 1535. Second?
Harvey?
Yes.
LeBarre?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-0.
Okay, we move on to new business. And 10A is considering resolution number 832. Kim?
Thank you. I'd like to discuss 10A and 10B together. I think it's clear that way. I just asked for a separate motion on each one. I'll do my best to describe it as clear as I can here. So resolution 832 is accepting a public sanitary sewer easement from Rick and Ann Mallett. They are the property owners of lots six and seven of the Bridlewood subdivision, filing two. And this is lot six and lot seven. Here you see the platted easement that goes across these two lots. This was the sewer main that was installed to serve these lots. These lots are outside city limits. There is a current outside sewer agreement as well as a current outside water agreement. Back in 2006, Mr. Al Born had constructed a sewer main and water main across the lots that I previously showed you, which are, which are these lots here and across lot one, which was the previous ordinance on a municipal posting. So what resolution 832 is asking is to accept the easement from Rick and Ann Mallett across lots six and seven, right here. And they have agreed to the grant of easement, our terms for the grant of easement, and what we require as far as being able to maintain and access that sewer main. Then moving on to resolution 833 is also a sanitary sewer easement across lot one, right here, that also connects obviously to lots seven and six. This was requested from Alan Roberta Born in order to serve lots one, and it serves lots seven and six as well. They have also agreed to our terms for the grant of easement so we can maintain and access sewer main that reverses through there. Mr. Born is here. You guys would like to ask him any questions tonight?
Thanks. Mr. Born, would you like to come forward? Do you have anything to say, to add, or we just like to hear from you, sir?
Al Born, 704 Woodland Avenue. Actually, I think sewer lines are probably not one of the most interesting topics until they plug. And this is, is a continuation really of the development of that area to hook into the municipal sewer system pursuant to county regulations and the fact that they also use city water. It's really straightforward. Nothing in particular. It's just moving one portion of the ground to another to improve the flow characteristics for lots six and seven. Might mention too, that with the aid of Mr. Wiley and Sally Riley was able to work through the various things to bring this to you tonight. So they've done well for me in helping get this thing finalized. So, thank you.
Great, thanks very much, Al. Questions for the applicant? If anybody in the audience on public comment that would like to step forward?
Everything flows downhill.
The creek lady knows that.
Okay, thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Counsel will take these one at a time. So I get a motion to consider resolution number 832 first.
So moved.
Second for Paul.
LeBarre?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you very much. And we'll repeat the process for resolution number 833 first.
Can move to consider resolution 833, accepting a public sanitary sewer easement from Alvin E. Born and Roberta S. Born, owners of real property with a legal description of lot one, the reserve at Bridlewood.
Second. Second, Suzanne.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
LeBarre?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-0.
Great, thank you, Suzanne. Thank you, counsel. Thanks, Sally. Thanks to Sal. We will move forward then to reports and mayor's reports. I, yeah, I have some of that, someone else. Why not? Good luck.
I put some on your desk, Mr. Mayor, but I'll talk about them if you want me to.
Why don't you talk about them?
I will, thank you so much.
Just going to make one.
I don't even have them.
One announcement that is interesting to people in the community, and we have meeting today with our police chief and the councilman, Councilwoman Harvey, myself, and Suzanne and Erin relative to our deer and our deer population. So I'm going to try to lay out a little bit what the plan is for now, and I know a lot of people are interested. DOW lead, Tim Krenig, has suggested that we hold off on this process at least until this time next year. So what he's in the midst of right now is hunting season. Since we don't have anything in place right now, we're going to go through the hunting season. Come February, we're going to have another count for DOW and wildlife. And then immediately following that, we're going to start making a plan for this time next year. What that will look like, we're not sure of at this time. Counsel hasn't had a chance to discuss it with the Department of Wildlife. So I would be remiss if I said anything else about how we're going to move forward. But I can say for sure is there'll be nothing done this year relative to controlling the deer population. But rest assured, after we get the count again next year, which Mr. Krenig doesn't imagine that that number's going to go down anyway, so we're going to be confronted with the same issue just kind of next year. And rest assured that we are going to address it and address it in the safest possible way that we can. Counsel has said on more than one occasion that first and foremost, biggest concern is the safety of our community. And so certainly the deer are causing issues. According to the chief, maybe four, five accidents a week relative to deer. So we want to remedy that, but we want to do it the very best possible way we can. So we're going to take baby steps. We're going to do it right, and it's going to happen in 2019. That's about all anybody knows about the process to this point, unless I forgot something.
Mr. Mayor, I think we also talked about potentially introducing an ordinance that would increase the penalty within the city limits for feeding large wildlife.
Thanks for reminding me. And that's going to come to us in the next couple of years. So we're hoping that if we raise that fine from, I think, $150 now, not everybody understands that the feeding of the deer is one of the big, big issues. Not only is it bad for the deer, but it's bad for the whole community. And so there'll be a resolution coming forward to possibly raise the fine for feeding the deer, and that's kind of the first step. So thanks for reminding me about that, Jim.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to tag along and just ask the citizens. I live on Evergreen Heights Drive. We have a lot of deer that run the open space across that road morning and night. People drive entirely too fast. The speed limit's 25 miles an hour, and I see it around town. I just would ask everybody, while we, while we try to come up with some kind of, amicable, is that the word we had earlier? Solution that, everyone, please slow down. It's really not that, you don't have to be in that big of a rush. And really keep an eye out for those babies and their mamas. We're in their neighborhood. We're living in their territory. So let's slow down a little bit, enjoy life a little bit, take it a little slower, and be more careful, and watch out for them, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Val?
Nothing tonight. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I just would like, I've mentioned before, I'm a member of the U-Pass Symphony Guild, and thank you to the Cruises Above the Clouds for their, their gift to the Symphony Guild. We are having our Concert of Appreciation on September 30th. I had some information in the back. I put an invitation to the council on the dais. And 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., September 30th, Memorial Park, we will have a pre-show with the Carrie Del Trio, and we will feature the Colorado Springs Philharmonic Brass Quintet. So we invite everyone, it's going to be the most beautiful day of the year, no rain, and I've arranged it, and we just would love everyone to, to treat it like you would the July 5th concert. Bring a picnic, bring your own chairs because it's a park, and come and bring a blanket and a warm jacket, because you never know. It does go to 6:00 p.m. So we'd invite everyone, please share this with everyone that you know. We're just trying to honor our sponsors and the community with a concert of appreciation and understanding in lieu of the July 5th concert. So thank you so much. The other thing I wanted to mention, Mr. Mayor, if you will, is on the same lines as the Cruises Above the Clouds, the Twee's Holiday Home Tour, although I know it's not Christmas, and I know it's not good to talk about it yet, but we are pre-selling tickets to the tour. It's December 1st and 2nd from 10:00 to 5:00. As you know, that's the day of the Lighterside Christmas Parade, all kinds of events, breakfast with Santa. We're giving away, we're entering everyone that prebuys their tickets for a giveaway of four tickets to the Broncos-Chargers game with two-room-one-night stay at the Renaissance Hotel in Denver for everyone that purchases their tickets before November 15th. So we encourage you to do that and to get entered in the drawing and support our nonprofits this year that will be receiving the proceeds is the Focus on the Forest, Teller Habitat for Humanity, and the Woodland Park Senior Organization that runs our senior center. So just two really good events to support our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Carol.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Tonight, who are?
Nothing this evening.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I fulfill my obligation to Main Street as liaison. I would like to read this with Main Street's word. Well, I can tell you this, it starts tomorrow at 8:00. But, I try, Paul, I really try. Can you hear me out there?
Yes.
All right, thank you for that, Paul. I appreciate it. Main Street has received investments from, from the Colorado Department of Education Development and the Colorado State of Labor Affairs, which funds are going directly to the city and also to Main Street. The breakdown this year on funding from DOLA. $11,600 market analysis and opportunity assessment for businesses in the downtown and the City of Woodland Park as a whole. Okay. $7,389 economic impact and promotional materials for Woodland Park prepared by DOLA contractor. $5,550 community partnership input session to obtain input from organizations in the community on projects, programs, fundings that the partners will work collectively on, identified for the community partner's role. $1,000 business input session facilitated by DOLA consultant. $1,800 Woodland Park, Main Street Board Training Session, annual training required facilitated by DOLA consultants. I'm trying to lose that New York accent, but I've been listening to you.
It's not working.
$35,000 Office of Economic Development Grant for Community Placemaking Design Work provided to the City of Woodland Park. According to the State Office of OEDIT, that the City of Woodland Park was awarded this grant because it has an effective designated Main Street organization. That is very important. Now, Main Street did get designated this year. What a great thing. For the total of $2018 invested into Woodland Park by the two state agencies was $62,339 under these consultant contracts. That's pretty good. That's a great return on the money. There was a $3,000 in scholarship to the Woodland Park for attendance at educational conference. That's the conference that they went through. 300 private investments. What it comes down to, if you want to throw in the volunteer hours with the volunteer organizations, there was 1,231 volunteer hours. If that was valued at $25 an hour, that would be $20,775. But we don't do that here. We give our time, and our time is valuable. It's free. So is it worth it to have Main Street with the DOLA grants and all that of $62,339? You bet it is. They do a great job, and the plan still continues on with the economic development, which really starts tomorrow and should end, I believe, the end of November, in there, maybe longer, longer, into the new year. Should be a valuable tool for the city. Thank you for that. I would like to say, I pulled item 10C from the council because maybe it was the wrong spot to be after some conversations, but it was for the Art Alliance in Antler Alley. And I would just like to express that there are shortfall of $12,700 to finish the second art, archway of Antler Alley. The steel is in place, design is in place, the columns are in place, the electricity is in place, and I have a complete breakdown. I would like to introduce this to council. And please look at it. We may have to go at this a different way with needs and wants for the budget and stuff like that. We may have to look at it as a volunteer and raise funds that way. But if the city can help, the Woodland Park Art Alliance in any way, it would be deeply appreciated by them. And I can tell you that would be true. And they work hard at it, and they do a great job. Second, I would like to thank Sally Raleigh. We did a water conference for CML, Waterwise, and they gave us a great write-up as we were a small town that really looked at our water and how to keep it for our future and our future growth. We're doing a great job at it. We presented in front of CLM in Denver, and they gave us a write-up. I thank Sally for that because Sally did the work. And who knows? Maybe we'll be talking at the annual conference at CLM this year coming up. Thank you very much. Thank you, Paul.
Well, I'm glad to, whoa. I'm glad to be here. I'm sorry I'm so late. We had a kid break his arm, and so it kind of pushed the game out 20 minutes.
Oh, you didn't make him play, did you?
No, no, he went to the hospital. But they, they stopped the clock. But anyways, I'm not sure if this was mentioned, but the homecoming parade was amazing yesterday. I can't believe how many people we have in this town, how many people were participating. The bonfire was amazing. The bonfire was amazing. So I'm just, you know, every time you get involved in something in our city like that, you just, you feel so proud of our city. So I just wanted to say that. But sorry I'm late. It was Canyon City, it was a tough game. We did lose 2-0, but it was a good game.
I played Canyon City baseball, it's usually not as good as 2-0, so.
Yeah.
Glad you guys played competitively. You guys are doing great. Is this your record now?
We're three and four.
Three and four, that's the best.
Ever. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Okay, we got that done, and we're going to have a city attorney, but we do have a city manager.
Great. You know, I have only four days under, under my belt here, so all I've known in the last few days is that we have a great staff, incredible staff. It's been very supportive. I've already met with Planning Department, Finance Department, and it's been great. But I'm going to defer my report to, to Kip Wiley for the Park Street Water Meter Project, discuss that, and then follow on with Sally Riley for the, the IGA with the Pike's Peak Regional Building Department.
First, the Park Street project has started. I've seen some movement down there. Black Hills Energy has started lowering gas service lines. The city has lowered the sanitary sewer service lines. IREA will be on-site to remove, to remove a light pole that's in the way, and then Kiwit will start the infrastructure installation of the storm sewer going through there as soon as the Lindsay Precast is done making the manholes and we can tie in and start moving up the street. And then we're looking at even continuing the paving on that project to actually pave from the highway all the way down to Columbine. So you'll see some movement there. Just wanted to update you on that. And then for the water meter project, we're in the first year of a four-year project of replacing water meters. We budgeted $250,000 to replace 800 water meters. To date currently, we are at, I'll actually pull it up and show you kind of just a quick preview, 683 water meters have been replaced of that 800 slated for this year, so we're almost complete with that. I just like to show this off because it gives us a better look at what's going on with our system, and basically if there's any leaks, what we've noticed so far is when we've identified continuous flow within 24 hours, we're able to call those customers and make them aware, and they've been greatly appreciative of that. And then we actually get to see on a daily basis what our water usage looks like. So of the 683 meters that are in place now, this is a daily usage. You can see today, the 20th, it's just a short spike because all the data, all the data hasn't come in yet. So what these meters do is they send out a text message once every 24 hours, and our customers can actually log into, it's called I on Water. And they can log in and see their usage, they can set up for text messages saying if their usage is over a certain amount, or if they have a continuous flow, and so on and so forth. It's been a great tool so far. So looking forward to continuing this for the next three years and getting a whole system so now we don't have to go door-to-door.
Freshman members, that $4 million of yours in the middle of the budget?
Yes, sir. Any questions?
That's awesome.
It is, great. It really helps you.
Yes. Oh, yes. Very much. Because we still, the, our current metering system is very outdated. They don't sell that equipment anymore, so we need to move forward with this. The technology just doesn't exist anymore. People don't go door-to-door, they typically do a drive-by system or a repeater system where they set up towers, similar to Black Hills and IREA. This is a cellular, so it just comes straight in. So we don't have to maintain other repeaters or towers.
So any defective equipment moving forward, do you have some of new permit?
Yes. So what we've started is anything that's defective, we've replaced, and then we do what I'll call safety concerns. There's a lot of homes with steep driveways, long driveways, takes a lot of time to walk up and down those or drive up and down those. People slip and fall. So we're trying to get those first and then attack the rest.
Counsel, my neighborhood has been there.
Yes, it has.
Sally?
Thank you. It's been nearly five years since we entered into an agreement with the Pike's Peak Regional Building Department, and so we will be coming forward with a slightly revised intergovernmental agreement. So this evening, I wanted to hand out to you after the meeting, the current IGA and then the redlined copy. There really are not any substantial changes, other than they are willing to do an eight-year agreement with us. It's been a terrific relationship and service for our community, so I just wanted this evening to give you a heads up that this will be on the agenda for October 18th.
Thank you. Anything else? I have nothing else on my duty. Anything else?
Hey, can you guys?